All right, we call and order the meeting of the mayor and council on July the 8th, 2025. We had a packed house tonight. Appreciate all of y'all here. We're going to start off with an invocation by Pastor Michael Jackson, Confident Missionary Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let us pray. Gracious in turn of God our Father, Lord, we come before your presence right now, God, asking and seeking your guidance and your direction for this meeting tonight. We ask now, God, that you lift up our mayor and that you would lift up our council, God. But we thank you for our citizens in our community and those who have come together, God. We pray now, God, that you make us stronger than ever before, God, that you would unify us, God, as we work together not only as mayor and council, but as different entities within the city, God. We pray tonight, God, for walls to begin to come down, God. And we pray now, Lord God, that you bless our law enforcement, our agency, our firefighters, and all those who serve, God. We pray now, God, for the violence that happens in our community, God. We pray that we could come together, God, for one coming cause, one come and go, God, that we all could work together, God, in unity. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice served.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson. Council, y'all had the opportunity to look over the council minutes held on June 24th.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, the same? Pass unanimously. All right, I'm gonna deviate from our agenda real quick, because we got a lot of people here that we need to get back out and work. Just being funny. So I wanna go to our delegations. Mr. Hiller Daniel with the Optimist Club of LaGrange. We got the LaGrange Firefighter of the Year and the LaGrange Police Officer of the Year. Mr. Hill.
All right, so I am going to come here to the side. So, Council, City Council, thank you guys for allowing us to be here today. Very much appreciate the opportunity to come and present our Optimist Club of LaGrange Police Department Officer of the Year and our LaGrange Firefighter of the Year. So if you guys wouldn't mind, though, right before we begin, I would love an opportunity to kinda recognize the member of our club that are here. So Optimist Club members, if you guys are here with us today, please stand just to have a quick recognition. Thank you, guys, for joining us today. Thank you, thank you. Wonderful. All right, so before I begin, I just wanted to say that in 1951, the Optimist Club of LaGrange was founded by several members of our community, and in 1965, Optimist International created the Respect for Law Program. The idea for the Respect for Law Program came from a meeting with J. Edgar Hoover and the president of Optimist International at the time. And Optimist International wanted to create an award that could be used by local organizations to highlight some of the work our local law enforcement does in communities all over the world. Since the inception of the program, it has been a very important part of the LaGrange Optimist Club annual agenda, and we very much appreciate every opportunity that we can come to present this award. Originally, the club only recognized members of the police department and the sheriff, but following the events of September 11th, we felt that it was important to recognize members of our fire department as well. So it is an honor to work with the police and the fire chief to recognize some of our own hard-working public servants that go above and beyond in their line of duty. So the individuals that we will recognize today truly are making LaGrange a brighter, more optimistic place for our youth. So to begin, I believe Chief Fivish is here. If you wouldn't mind helping me come up to present our award. Is that the right one? We're doing five, no, five, five, please. Perfect. You can hold on to that. Nope, that's the one you want. Yep. Okay, so, serving your community as a police officer can come with its benefits, but there are many days where the responsibility of the job can weigh heavy on your shoulders. This year's Police Officer of the Year has spent the last 12 months completing work that many of us never could. Despite the intensive nature of his work, this individual comes into the office every day and performs with the highest standards of professionalism, dedication, and investigative excellence. His willingness to lend his skills to his colleagues gives the LPD an opportunity to do right by those in our community that have been wrong. When nominating an individual for this award, Captain Pritchett of the LPD stated that the record of Detective Kendra Scott spoke for itself, but also that his character, resilience, and unwavering sense of duty set him apart, and that he is the embodiment of what this award represents. I think I can speak for the LaGrange community when I say that we are lucky to have such a steadfast individual like Detective Scott on the LPD. So Detective Scott, we thank you for your commitment to the betterment of our community and the optimist attitude that you bring to your work every day. Please come up here and join us to receive your award.
My pleasure, on behalf of the LaGrange Optimist Club, to present this award to you. Yes, sir, absolutely.
And if you or Chief Fivish would like to say anything?
I've got a couple things. When I saw Kendra's name on my calendar, he wanted to come in and talk to me about a job with the police department. Came in, sat down, he told me he wanted to come to work there, he wanted to work hard, and he wanted to retire from there, and he said I wouldn't regret it. I had. I had. Hard worker, shows up early, stays late, lost a bunch of weight, got in shape, got in touch with the ESU team. Self-improvement, that's what it's all about, altering behavior and making LaGrange a better place, and no finer example. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Do you have anybody else you want to bring up?
Yeah, I think I'm asleep.
You guys switch your sides.
Switch sides, okay, so we'll go with this.
You want to get first, really, I'll get first. I'll take a few more. This year's firefighter of the year has been noted, has been noticed not only for his dedication to the LaGrange Fire Department, but also to the community around him. In the past year, this individual has given his time to participate in the Harmony House Dragon Boat Race, serving as a team member on the LaGrange FOOLS firefighter muster, I don't know if that stands for fools or the acronym is, but the Fools Firefighter muster team, taking, helping LaGrange take second place overall. Walking the stairs of Truist Park for the 9/11 Stair Clum Event, and supporting the Terry Farrell Foundation, and attending the 575 Fools Live Fire Training? Fools? Okay. Live fire training. In addition to all those individual contributions, this person has completed the Apparates Operator Pumper Certification, attended the Bears of the Oath Conference, successfully completed the NPQ Rope Rescue Technician Levels 1 and Level 2 Certification, and is working towards his classes for his GSAR Certification. In his nomination letter, firefighter Jonathan Wong was described by his leadership as embodying the values of professionalism, service, and integrity that define the LaGrange Fire Department. His dedication to continuous improvement, community service, and team excellence make him a standout candidate for firefighter of the year. Firefighter Wong is the type of individual LaGrange can be proud of and has the optimistic spirit a community benefits from. Please come up to join us to receive your award. Do you guys have anything I'd like to say?
This is your time. What do you want to say?
Well, it's such an honor that you presented this award. I really appreciate the Optimist Club, but I didn't earn this on my own. It's really about my crew and the leadership. So special shout out to Lieutenant Charles Mallory, Sergeant Casper, and firefighter Smith. Those guys have really pushed me and encouraged me to be the better firefighter that LaGrange deserves.
Outstanding.
Yep. All right, and help that current over here. Again, it is always an honor to include this on our annual agenda. We look forward to it, and we look forward to next year when we get to join you guys. Once again, thank you for having us.
I want to say thank you to the Optimist Club for recognizing these men and women that put their lives out on front lines every day, and congratulate Kendra and Jonathan. Thank you, appreciate y'all. All right, we'll take a short recess, or I say just give a second and let, if y'all want to get out and leave, we'll kind of take a, take a short break. If y'all want to, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. I'm not getting any papers. Yeah. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. So we have one public hearing tonight, and I assume, Mr. Costle, that was properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it has been. No comments this time.
Okay, so we have a public hearing on the proposed special use permit in order to operate a short-term rental at 530 Ridgecrest Road. At this time, I'm gonna ask anyone that opposes it, that wants to speak, to come up to the podium and state your name and say whatever you want to say, and then I'll give the owner, the owner, the applicant, the opportunity to rebuttal afterwards and ask, answer any questions that they may have.
Okay, my name is Susan Black, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I live at 524 Ridgecrest Road, and I've lived there for almost 28 years now with my husband. I'm here because of the special use permit application that's been made for the 530 Ridgecrest Road. I looked over the rules and I apologize, but I wrote everything down so I could get it, so I may read some of this. I got a copy of the rules for the special use permit, and it's my understanding that a special use permit is designated to deal with particular uses of land or property that are difficult to fit with any existing use zones. Special use permits an exception to the current zoning use. The property at 530 Ridgecrest Road has been established since the 1960s as a single-family residence, as are all the homes in our neighborhood. I did notice on the agenda today that there's another second reading later on for a special use permit. That was my understanding of what these special use permits would be used for, is more blighted areas or land that's not used that may serve a better purpose. We do not have any vacant land in our neighborhood. I looked over the applicant's application. All the requirements have been met. I don't have any reason to believe anything but the best intentions of the applicant, but that's not my issue. And there's still no guarantee of what can happen when you let a transient property come into your neighborhood. We have over 75 homes on Ridgecrest Road alone. It also encompasses, our neighborhood encompasses Lane Circle, Westwood, Pineview Terrace, and there's three different entrances from Country Club Road that you can use to access the section of Forest Hills subdivision. But our subdivision is not a pass-through, so it's not one of those streets that everybody passes through to get to somewhere else. It's a neighborhood. The property is kind of in the backside of that neighborhood. I'm just questioning the benefits of allowing the special use permit. I don't see how the use benefits our neighborhood or even meets a community need. I'd like to see our neighborhood preserve the single-family residential character. Children do play in the streets. People do walk in our streets. The neighborhood's, it's quiet. It's a safe place. I also noticed the city has a comprehensive plan in place that y'all are going over right now, but the one in place right now, and it defines different types of neighborhoods. You've got stable, redevelopment, developing, and established. And our neighborhood falls within the established neighborhood, which states that land use includes single-family residential. There's no mention of multifamily or mixed use, like all the other different types of neighborhoods do. So I see no reason or purpose to allow any change to the character of our neighborhood by granting one house to be used for another purpose. We have no HOA or covenants that state that you can't use your home for another purpose, like some subdivisions do have. We can only rely on the city to keep our neighborhood as it was originally intended. So I'm asking you to please deny the application that was filed on May the 19th requesting the special use permit for 530 Ridgecrest Road that was purchased on March the 28th of 2025 by the applicant. There's also, I don't know if you want people to stand that are also here in opposition or raise hands, or if that's necessary, or...
If you want to ask them into opposition...
If anybody, you can raise your hand to show a little bit of support. I know that some people are out of town, everything, but that's all I have to say.
Question for you.
Sure.
Thank you for coming up with your concerns as well. So I always heard you say that you're not against special use permits or VRBOs or whether they're gonna be...
No, just in our neighborhood, because there's only one other property on Country Club that is one, and I just don't see that it fits within the neighborhood.
If they were gonna be in a blighted or a underdeveloped area, you would have no problem with that.
No, I would not.
You just don't want it in your neighborhood.
Well, ours is not blighted, and the tax assessors have rightly decided that it's not, because...
Yes, ma'am, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I have nothing against special...
Or just against it just for your neighborhood?
No, I would be standing here in support for voting against it if it was in the Flowerty Streets, or if it was in Ashford, or some other neighborhood that doesn't have the protection.
How about Hamilton Road?
That's a big, I don't know what the use is. I don't know what that's scheduled, I don't think it's, it's an established neighborhood. I'm looking at established neighborhoods, basically.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Black?
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, you want to speak?
How are y'all doing? All right. I'm Susan Smith. I live at 701 Ridgecrest. My parents, who recently passed, built that house, and I now live there. The neighborhood has always been a great place for children to play. We walk, there are dogs. The kids play in the street half the time, and the problem with a one-day rental is we don't know who's there or what their intentions could or could not be. Probably good, but we don't know that. There are a lot of rental homes in the neighborhood, and we know those people. I make it a point to know my neighbors and to pay attention to what goes on in the neighborhood. This one-day rental, I don't know what the purpose could possibly be. I'm a realtor, I could sell that house to people that are looking for a home to buy. Instead of wasting the space for a one-day rental, and most of my neighbors that I know are opposed to this, many could not be here, especially the neighbors with children. And it's a single-family neighborhood. That's the designation. I have the actual original charter for the neighborhood, and it specifically states this kind of thing, like a multifamily or that whatever cannot be placed in the neighborhood. There are children living less than probably 50 feet from that home. Not everybody is able to come and voice their opinion due to their job or whatever, but I think it's a shame that we should even have to be here. I'm not opposed to the Airbnb idea, but it belongs in a commercial, an area that has hotels and motels or whatever. It's a business license. Now, I can't get a business license for that neighborhood for something, people are coming and going. I know I can't, because I had a business license that was assigned to that address, but I was not allowed, of course, to bring my personal equipment home and all that and have customers come in and out of the house. What's the difference in an Airbnb? They're transient, and we don't want it. And the one on Country Club has just been charming. People beat the neighbor when he asked them to turn the music down. Now, there are a lot of Airbnbs all over town, and I would say I wouldn't want them in any single-family neighborhood. That's why you buy a house there. You don't want that kind of thing. They belong downtown, like the one that's up here on the corner, and that's that. And these folks back here are opposed, they've also lived in the neighborhood for many, many years. I mean, we don't seem to have a voice or be able to make any kind of progress, like our voices are not heard. We paid the taxes, and they're paying hotel motel tax and a business license tax. What do you call that? It's not a single-use thing. It is a hotel or a motel. And I'm sorry, I'm not a great public speaker, but that's what I feel. And I'm about to have to spend a whole lot of money on my house, and I don't want to do it in a neighborhood that is suffering that kind of thing. We don't want it. And anyway, that's that. I'm one of the, I saw the work meeting this morning, I'm one of the uneducated Susans, saw that, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
I have a quick question.
Okay, yeah.
It's my understanding from the meeting this morning that the applicant reached out to the neighbors to see if there were concerns or if they had questions about anything. Of those that are here that are opposed, could anyone tell me, would you mind just telling me if you responded or asked direct any questions to the applicant? Okay.
I asked questions, but they were answered with, oh, I know all these people, Stacy Blone and whatever, and the people on Sylvan, and I should ask them.
Okay.
And that doesn't help me. And I, the point is, we don't want it.
Right. I was just going off of your, get to know your neighbors, and I knew that they had had a home there for several months. I was just curious if y'all had communicated at all as they've been working on the house.
And honestly, I didn't know what it was, and I threw it away. It was just a piece of paper, unofficially mailed, like the requirements state. Yeah, we have to put it in the mailbox.
Okay, I was just curious.
It just said, I want to use this as a special, I'm applying for a permit. I didn't understand it at the time until I saw the posting.
Is there any, is there anybody else that wants to speak in the opposition?
Hello, so my name is Gus Golden. Live at 601 Ridgecrest, have lived there. Moved in last September, and I moved in with the hopes of starting a family, and I know a bunch of other young people in our neighborhood moved in with the same dream, a single-family neighborhood. My grandmother grew up, she had a house on Cherokee, I think since like 52, so I grew up in the area, spent a bunch of time there, and I loved the idea of it being a really tight-knit community, and so dreamed of moving back to LaGrange, moved back there, moved into 601 last September. And I really hate the fact that we're even here. I hate us having to even talk about people, what they can do with their own property, because I think they should have the right to do what they want to do with their property, but when, I think, when it affects a community, when it affects a neighborhood and people that are already established there, then I think we should at least have a voice. And I also, and I also know they're really nice people, they're extremely generous people, so I hate that it's even come to this. But just the fact of not knowing who will come in there, and I know they have a great reputation with who they bring in on the Sylvan address, and they, they say, we've had no complaints, we've had no complaints, but it only takes one time, and I know the neighbors that I just talked to, they're like, we aren't opposed to it, but we're extremely hesitant, we really don't want it, but if it comes to a point, then we will complain. But I hate if it gets to that point, then it's already too late. And I also know me, my neighbors that are directly across the street from me, and the neighbors, if you're looking at the posed house to the right, we're all opposed to it. We're all young families, we're gonna start having kids soon. We just don't want people coming in and out. We don't know, we aren't able to build a relationship with the residents that would be coming in. We'd be able to build a relationship within and from, my understanding, but y'all can tell me if I'm wrong, y'all plan on staying there for a good bit of the time?
During the season.
Right, right, which, which is great. I would love for y'all to be able to stay there as long as possible, because that's what this community is. I mean, we have cookouts, grillouts and everything, and, and it's just what I've heard, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but y'all are doing that so y'all's kids can be closer to school and everything, too?
We have a beautiful property in Hamilton, Georgia. We'd love to go to it.
Yes, ma'am, yes, I've kind of heard all about it, heard, heard that it's beautiful. So whenever your kids leave, do y'all plan on living there full-time, or is it gonna get converted to more so what the Sylvan Residence is?
I'm a LaGrange girl, I've been for my whole life, former teacher of 11 years. We own our business here that's downtown. We're in LaGrange all day, every day, except Saturdays and Sundays we'll take a break for Hamilton. But yes, Sylvan's been wonderful. Actually, Susan texted me, I wasn't returning my phone calls when I tried to call her, and since she didn't return any of the phone calls, I gave her references, and she wasn't comfortable because she wasn't getting my phone calls.
I'm gonna allow you a time in just a minute, Ms. Poe. Go ahead, finish up.
Yeah, so, so my concern is just what it could turn into, and just putting trust in people that won't be there the full time, and just the standard that it might set for other houses in our neighborhood, the standard it might set for other single-family neighborhoods, because I know you said, what about Hamilton Road? I hate to see any tight-knit community kind of be broken up and allow people that... and allow people that aren't there, that aren't really bought into the identity of what that community is, just kind of get disrupted. And, and it just isn't ideal and just like I said, I hate that we're even here to tell people what they can do with their own property. So I just want to say that I am against it. A couple of my other neighbors that are against it, they just aren't able to be here. They're out of town, they're at work. There's at least one, two, three, there's four other households that are right around that house that I'm kind of representing today too.
Thank you for that statement, Mr. Golden. I understand where I was coming from and I wasn't trying to be sarcastic or anything, but thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
So it seems like you have canvassed the neighborhood pretty good. If you had to take, yes, I mean, not going to hold you to this.
Yes, sir.
Oppose, support, what would you say the split is?
I would, it's, it's hard for me to speak for the whole entire neighborhood because I don't know everyone in the whole entire neighborhood. It's a really big neighborhood. And she said, "There's 75 houses just on Ridgecrest and then you have all the other roads." But from everyone that's in my little tight-knit group, everyone's against it. And that's, that's my house, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. That's, that's eight households. And so it's, so it's just them talking to me and them either not being comfortable coming or them being out of town, them having to work. So I just felt like I needed to do what I could do as a neighbor and come and represent them and come and represent my household.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak against? Okay, see none.
I think somebody raised.
I was just going to ask, how do we know?
She's got to come up here.
Come, yeah.
She's got to come up.
We don't know if she is a LaGrange girl, first of all.
I'm going to allow her, I'm going to allow her to answer some of y'all's concerns. That's why, that's why I kind of let y'all go first to give out, to get your concerns out there so she can answer them. So Nick and Crystal, whichever one of you want to come up, please do.
I'm definitely a LaGrange girl. I've been, I think the people that are opposed don't know me, don't know my family. I emailed the whole council, all the comments that were on our neighborhood page. There was a lot of people that were in support. I emailed those to you guys. I was born and raised here. I'm a former teacher of 11 years in Truitt County. I help a lot of people in the community with their Medicare options. My husband's from here. He graduated from LaGrange High as well. My kids are amazing citizens in the community. You know them, they're amazing. They go to LaGrange High, they'll be in ninth and 12th grade. Nick, we're good people and we are generous people. And my, I run a tight ship with my kids. I run a tight ship with my renters. Okay, at the end of the day, I could rent this house to somebody for 12 months or for two years. Then they're done that. They come in, they're good first two or three months and then they start to bring in pets and they start to, you know, just get more comfortable and not follow the rules. When you have somebody come in, and I've been doing VRBOs since 2019, I have the experience, I have the references when you went and picked my phone call up, Ms. Susan. The phone up to call me. Not one person came to my house to introduce themselves. No, not one, when I gave them all that opportunity to call and ask. The piece of paper was a letter written by me. You got a copy of it? I mailed it. And it also had the strict rules. I'm choosing to be regulated. I'm choosing to have a minimum of 10 people on the property. I'm choosing to only have five cars on the property. I'm signing up for regulations. You know why? Because I love my properties. I take pride in my properties. I'm not just buying a house to rent it out. I use my properties. So these rules that this city council came up with are great. And I've had cameras on my property, 24-hour surveillance. I'm choosing to be heavily regulated. Or I could rent it to somebody for 31 or plus days and it not be regulated because the state of Georgia does not allow you to regulate long-term rentals. Okay, so I just wanted to put that out there. I wanted to say I enjoy being a Verbo host. It allows me more control over my property. I've had a wonderful experience since 2019 with it. I have two properties in Hamilton, Georgia. I have a property at 502 Sylvan. You can talk to Pat Barton, you can talk to Stacy Malone and the neighbors around it.
Address the council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're the ones.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, okay, I'm sorry. Just a little bit about me. I mean, you can rent to somebody for two days or you can rent to them for a year. And, you know, I personally provide, like the clientele of Verbo. They behave. When they have to come for a two-night minimum, they're paying $500 a night. They're putting down a $1,000 deposit. They don't follow the rules, they get a noise complaint, they lose all their money. They're great, they're great. It's a great clientele. How's it benefit LaGrange, Georgia? My house on Sylvan, I didn't even know if it would do well. I really didn't. People were like, "Why do people want to come to LaGrange?" But it has done very well and it's supported our local citizens as well as people coming in town. Here's some examples of how it supported the people that lived in the neighborhood. The Pattens, Mike and Jean Patton, had a tree fall on their house. They needed a place for two months. It worked out beautiful for them. They really enjoyed it. Mr. Tommy lost his house on Lakewood in the electrical storm we had, burned to the ground. He had no place to go. He had no furniture, nothing. He stayed with me at Sylvan. Super appreciative. People need the home sometimes in between houses. They're selling a house and they're buying a house. So that's how it benefits local citizens. Here are some of the people that come in town that are my clientele, okay? Their parents are sick. Children have moved off. They're coming back in town. Their parents are sick. They're dying. They need a nice place to stay for a week or two. Parents are coming in town because their children are having newborn babies. One of that, that, there's a family in Ridgecrest that benefited from the house on Sylvan because of this. They come in town, helped their daughter for two weeks. You have college parents coming in town because their son plays tennis for LaGrange College. Okay, those are my clientele. People coming in town, we want people to visit LaGrange. LaGrange is the cutest town in Georgia. I've been to just about every one of them in my profession. There's no cuter town than Georgia. We want people, I mean, LaGrange, Georgia, we want people to come in and go to Sweetland. We want them to go to Wild Lake. We want them to go to Nutwood Winery. We want them to come in and participate in all the activities we have, Great Wolf Lodge. Those are people that stay with me. But also people stay with me that are going to Calaway Gardens. That are also going to Auburn football games, coming in for fishing tournaments, funerals, weddings. Sometimes they're just coming to enjoy our cute little downtown. And guess what? We have one hotel downtown. It stays booked and this gives them an opportunity to be in a nice neighborhood. Why did I buy the house in Ridgecrest? Because I love that neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood. It's a single-family neighborhood. There's not multiple families going to be renting the home for the weekend. There are some homes in the neighborhood right now that are renter, that are long-term rentals that there's some, I think there's a multiple family in one of those or complaints about that. So I would love the opportunity to do it. I have a proven track record. It is my property. I do own it. I've invested every single penny into it for my family to enjoy during the week and for us to occasionally rent it out. And I've done both sides. And I prefer my nice, sweet Verbo clientele. They're older, they're respectful and they, and they're just great. I prefer that clientele.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to declare this public here.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor?
Speak in favor, okay. I'll allow another one to speak in favor.
Can't manage from the neighborhood.
Hey, one question for you. You said that you guys are going to stay there through the weekday, but not on the weekend. So you're beating up five out of seven days?
Three to four.
Three to four days?
Sometimes we'll go home here. Sometimes we'll go to Hamilton during the week, but yeah.
Okay.
They're alive.
My name is Camille Shaw. I'm one of the ones that lives in Ridgecrest. I live on Pine and Bee Terrace and I think I represent the other percentage that does agree with this. I'm a LaGrange girl. I've been here my entire life, but from four years old. I'm 52 now, so I've been here 40-some years. My, I grew up in the Flower District. However, when I started my family, like the other ladies I mentioned, I wanted a small, a small family home neighborhood, not, Flower District is a little bit more established. Ridgecrest is a wonderful neighborhood. It is a very tight-knit neighborhood. I don't think the families in there are necessarily tight-knit. We do have a Facebook page. Several comments throughout the year are made by anonymous members. That's not tight-knit. If you don't not say who you are, it's not tight-knit. I don't know any of the people that came up and spoke. They're probably wonderful people. I don't know any of them. I've been in this neighborhood for 15 years. My family, I've got two of the kids, I'm sure they're talking about, that's playing around. I've got one going to Georgia Southern next year and another one that's going to be a sophomore at LaGrange. And without the VRBOs, I wouldn't have a place to stay for Parents Weekend at Statesboro because they are a smaller town that has come overwritten, or not overwritten, but doomed because of a college. And there's nowhere to stay. I have a friend that went down for Parents Weekend. She couldn't even see her son for Parents Weekend because there wasn't anywhere to go. Without the VRBOs in the small neighborhoods, that's where we like to stay rather than a hotel. We like to say that we have a little bit more room to move around. And I am for, Crystal, I have seen her, the property on Sylvan, probably every single day in the last year or two years. My daughter is best friends with one of the girls that lives around the corner. I pass that property every single day, at least once or twice. There is, that yard is most beautifully upkept. The house has always been beautiful. The neighbors that she has rented to, whether it's her or the others, have always been respectful there. I've got nothing to believe that it's not. Crystal is only going to allow the best to be done at her house. I mean, she keeps a very beautiful home, probably way more than I do and I just think she'll be a blessing to her neighborhood. And like she says, she's there most of the time anyway and I love to have her as a neighbor. We do have a lot of rental properties in our neighborhood, long-term, and there's a lot of problems. They might not see them. They might be a little bit closer to my house, but we have a lot of problems. We've had drug neighborhoods. We've had ambulances and fire engines. When my son was four years old, he goes, "What's happening?" I said, "Bad decisions, bad decisions." There are a lot of problems that maybe they don't see at the bottom end that we see at the top end. But a short-term rental, I know she can basically go through and decide who she's going to rent to and if she believes that they are, like she said, they're going to be in and out and they'll be gone and she can come in, clean the place up and make sure that her family's comfortable there. I've got nothing but the utmost respect for Crystal and I think that she'll only rent the best. So I approve. And a whole bunch of other people.
Thank you. All right, anybody else speak for, speak for short-term rental? All right, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. So we're going to move on now to petitions and communications to approve a special use permit in order to operate a short-term rental at 530 Ridgecrest Road.
Man, that was quick.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, could you explain what might be different about the way that we vote on special use permits as opposed to a rezoning?
I would defer to our city attorney.
This only requires one vote. You may recall in the past, I think group home would be a similar special use permit requirement. You do have a public hearing like you do in a rezoning, but it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't require two readings. So it's ripe to be taken up tonight if, if y'all are prepared to vote.
Move we approve?
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve any discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to try to understand one thing. Do we have the original ordinance from 1960?
I actually have the original.
We're talking, we're talking.
This is actually a question for Mr. Todd. Do we have the original ordinance from 1960?
On what topic?
On this area, this zoning for this community.
I assume she was referring to maybe some covenants and restrictions, but yeah, I don't.
Are they imposed by the city?
Generally, covenants and restrictions are not. Zoning is, but covenants and restrictions are not.
Okay, that was, that was the question I had. I have no further questions. I'm ready to vote.
Any more discussion? All right, I'm going, I'm going to get you to raise your right hand on this. All in favor, raise your right hand. Three, four. All opposed, same. Passes four to two. All right. Moving along, we got a 2025 municipal election adopting the calendar of events.
Yes, Jeff Todd prepared a calendar for the upcoming election with all the critical dates on it and we would just need a motion if it be your desire to adopt that calendar.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. All right, city manager for?
One item. As discussed this morning, we have received a second annul item notice related to Ms. Kendrick's in an accident related to a police department pursuit. Chief reviewed all of the facts and investigated the situation, believes that all the proper protocols were followed by the officers and we would recommend denial of any claims.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to deny sending insurance.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? All, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Resolutions, we got a resolution for the City of Milton support.
Yes, if it be your desire, we have a resolution before you that would authorize the mayor to sign the resolution to participate in an amicus brief before the Supreme Court. This is related to the $32 million verdict that was assessed against the City of Milton related to an obstruction that was in the right-of-way of a public street. We believe it's right for, for support at the Supreme Court level if you be, if it be your desire.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. No first reading of orders, we got a few second reading of orders. To rezone two parcels located in the 1900 block of Lukin Industrial Drive West from CRMX to CPGI.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real estate located on Lukin Industrial Drive, that's reclassify, excuse me, west and owned by SKJ Properties to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We tabled this ordinance until the following council meeting.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to table this. And tabling it, I do know we got our report today, but several council members has not read it and looked over it and we had a couple of, a couple of other people that.
This is the discussion part we're going to have right now, so.
Yeah, okay.
I believe I read it, but are they saying that the airport didn't weigh in?
Yes, they have, they have not weighed in. Is that correct?
I mean, is he on vacation or something or what?
Well, the report just come out at like 3 o'clock today, 2:30.
That's why I seconded it is because I haven't had a chance to review the report that came out.
I also made a motion because of the issue you brought up today where we need to make sure that Aertron or the.
Has been notified.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So we got a couple of reasons we tabled it, so.
Okay, I just wanted to see where we were.
Is, I got a motion and a second. Is any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Passes unanimously. All right, then we got to approve a special use permit and I guess we can't approve that until we get the zoning done.
That's right.
So what do, do we need to?
Like a make a motion to table that?
Nope.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, we'll just, we'll just move that off of our agenda. All right, we got a proposed UDO text amendment related to exterior plating material within certain commercial zoning districts.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning ordinance of the city in order to modify the allowance of pre-engineered color-coded wall panels for the general building typology in certain zoning classifications to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
All right, I'll take a motion on that.
I'm going to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Then proposed UDO text amendment related to minimum front porch dimensional requirements for cottage-style homes.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning ordinances of the city in order to modify the minimum porch size for the cottage house building type to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
I'd like to make a.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we tabled this until the next council meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. No board and agencies, we got the delegations done. We got Ms. Katie Manchur with her closing comments.
Yes, sir. The good news for tonight, reminder that we'll be hosting that third annual mayor, or the third mayor.
the third mayor's reading club is Thursday, June 10th, from noon to 2:00 at the AMC Theater in downtown LaGrange. Mayor Arrington will be reading the book, The Sour Grape. The fourth and final mayor's reading club will be at the Back to School Dash Friday, August 1st, on Lafayette Square, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Of course, these events are free and family-friendly.
We've actually sold out, I say sold out, it's free, but we sold two movie theaters, too.
We did.
So it's great.
We did.
We'll be subtle, we'll be subtle.
I don't know, I'm reading in the entrance area, so we'll be packed up.
Good job, people.